Uh, the role, please.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here. Um, I need a motion approved in minutes for October twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Corrections, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Um, reporting and recognition, FY thirteen audit report, uh, we had our audit report and I believe he's here, someone's here to go over it. Make the minute taker note that the mayor, please, arrived and, uh, Mr. Jacob has entered a meeting. So... If you want, go ahead and start and I need your, your, your name in that, or we know. Go ahead, Brad.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, again, this year with us, uh, we have Mr. Scott Termine from Wolf and Company. Uh, he was the partner on the engagement for the city, um, overall, another successful year for the city from an audit standpoint. Um, and as we've done in years past, uh, Mr. Termine's gonna go over a few of the highlights, uh, of the report. Um, the report most of you got was in the, the Dropbox, the PDF version, so we do have page number conversions because we'd always run into that issue with the page numbers in the PDF versus the page numbers in the report. So, we do have, uh, those conversion numbers for you, so you can, uh, follow along a little more easily as we go through the report. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Termine, uh, to go through some of the high points of the report.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks to all of you for having us, uh, back to conduct the audit, uh, once more. If, uh, nobody is following along with the hard copy, I'll just, uh, allow Brad to chime in with the PDF numbers to make it a little easier for you. Uh, the first thing I'd like to point out for you within the document that you have is the independent auditor's report, which will be on, uh, page nineteen of the PDF document that you have. I'm sorry? Okay. So, the auditor's report then, uh, for this year, as in prior years, is, uh, what we refer to as a clean opinion or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that all of the, uh, numbers and disclosures are properly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, so that's exactly what you want under the circumstances. Uh, so, clean, positive opinion there. The next thing that I would call to your attention, uh, will be on page twenty-two of the PDF file, uh, which is the beginning of the management's discussion and analysis. Uh, this provides a nice narrative overview of the results of operations and kind of walks you through, uh, some of the different layers of financial statements that you have within the document, so it can be very, uh, helpful, uh, make things a little bit more easy to read and understand. So, I'd encourage you to, uh, take a look at, uh, that section as well. Uh, Brad put, uh, a good amount of time and effort into that, and I think it's, uh, very helpful, uh, to the reader as well.
What is it on the PDF file? What page is that?
Page twenty-two.
The hard copy?
Uh, within the hard copy, it would be page three.
Cause so, I, I do have a hard copy, that's fine.
Okay, I'll give you both then.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, from the M-D-N-A, then, we would go to, uh, page sixteen in the hard copy, or, uh, thirty-six in the PDF file. Uh, and there you have the balance sheet for all of the governmental funds. Uh, so, within the fund level disclosures, one thing that's always of, uh, significance is the general fund results. Uh, and here, just a couple of things that I would point out are the, uh, overall cash and investment position for the city. Uh, the general fund there has approximately eight-point-five million dollars of cash and investments, uh, which approximates eighty percent, uh, of your annual expenses, so it's a good cash position to have. Uh, and I'd also call to your attention, at the very bottom of the general fund column, then, uh, is the unassigned fund balance of the general fund. And this is the, uh, fund balance that's available to spend, uh, as you choose, uh, without any restriction. And that's approximately eleven-point-one million dollars, or, uh, over one year's worth of expense, which is very, uh, positive position to be. Uh, you could talk to several different accountants and get different answers in terms of what a good target is. Uh, but generally speaking, uh, Government Finance Officers Association would recommend that you never go below two months' worth of expenditures. Uh, and broadly speaking, at least twenty-five percent is considered healthy. So, you're well over a year, it's a very favorable position. Next thing that I would call to your attention is on page eighteen of the hard copy, uh, or page thirty-eight within the PDF file. Uh, and here's the results of operations for the general fund, so you've got revenues and expenses, uh, for the fund. And in total, both revenues and expenses are fairly comparable to the prior year. Uh, the revenue in total is about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars favorable versus the budget. Uh, and your expenses were about three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars under budget. So, overall, about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar favorable swing, uh, versus the, uh, targeted budget result for the year. Uh, and then there was a, a transfer out, uh, actually, a couple of transfers out, uh, within the fund that I would call to your attention, about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was moved, uh, to the Equipment Replacement Fund, uh, and five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to the Land Acquisition Fund for the year. Uh, so that resulted in just, uh, about one-hundred-thousand dollars of increase overall for the general fund position for the year. And then, uh, and, yes.
I, I have, do you wanna wait to the end for the questions?
No, absolutely.
Okay. The question I have with the, uh, Equipment Replacement Fund.
Go.
Isn't it instead transferring out a general fund, is it feasible to start a, a separate line item just for Equipment Replacement Fund and, and not to the transfer like that? I mean, I, or does most towns do, just do the transfers out generally?
Uh, it, it is a mix. Some, some will establish what's referred to as a, a general fund, uh, reserve, or in the new terminology is you would, uh, with board approval, establish a commitment to spend, uh, those funds, and you could record it in the general fund. Uh, sometimes it keeps it a little bit cleaner if you have, uh, the separate fund presentation, uh, and that is the route that you've taken to this point.
Okay.
So, it's acceptable either way. Then, uh, the next thing I would bring to your attention is just page twenty in the hard copy and, uh, page forty in the PDF, uh, which has the results of operations for the proprietary funds. In particular here, call to your attention, the water and sewer operations. Uh, your cash position, uh, is down from about fifteen-point-five million dollars in the prior year. Uh, currently, it's about eight million dollars, and that's the result of spending down on the bonds, uh, for capital projects within the Water and Sewer Fund. Uh, and that corresponding increase is seen in the, uh, capital asset position, which is now at roughly twenty-five million dollars for the year. And here, the unrestricted, uh, net asset position of the fund is about three-point-three million dollars, or roughly fifty-five percent of the annual expenses for the water fund. Uh, and the results of operations for, uh, the Water and Sewer Fund are presented on the following page, page twenty-one, uh, or forty-one in the PDF. Uh, and here you had, uh, slight, uh, increase in the, uh, net asset, or the net position, uh, of the fund, uh, of about four-hundred-thousand dollars excess, uh, revenues versus expenses. Uh, that was it, uh, in terms of some of the financial highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the financial statements.
Anyone have a? No. Can I, are we done, or?
Yes.
I, I have a question for, for you, since you are our auditor. I believe you got the contract for next year, too, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. My question's to you is, we have consider, or maybe considering, of going to a yearly budget from January to January that we are looking into. We found out that more and more villages and towns and cities are doing that because it's easier to plan out for projects. In your perspective, and I might have put you on the spot here, do you find it a much difficulty for us to make the transfer over with your account, you know, accountability audit report? You find it easier or harder to make that change over? If we choose to do that?
If you change the, the period for, that would be for the operating budget, or just capital?
No.
Okay. Operating, uh, it does somewhat blur the lines if you're not mirroring the fiscal year. Uh, most will, uh, follow that same period. Uh, it, it can be reconciled, though. Uh, we would just have to have that conversion of the, uh, board-approved, essentially, calendar, uh, budget numbers to work into, uh, what would flow into the CAFR, uh, presentation. It's not, uh, something that we couldn't, uh, handle. Uh, it would just have to be sufficient detail there of the, uh, monthly expenses, uh, so that you have a true apples-to-apples comparison.
But all the towns that you do audit, are they fiscal year?
They're following fiscal year. Not all, but there are, there are some that are calendar, yes.
Okay. So, there won't be a major difference?
No, so, is the, in consideration to change the fiscal year to correspond with that budget period?
Following year.
So, the only issue there is you would have one, uh, short period.
Right.
Audit to conduct, uh, as well in that cut-over period. Uh, there's pros and cons for both. Uh, a lot of people like the, uh, mirroring of the payroll expenses and reporting. That's one of the big pros, uh, is all the W-two information, uh, would follow along with calendar.
So, you would have to do like a two-audit report, you would have to do a six-month and then?
Yeah, we would do the one-short period.
For, for the first year?
Right, yes.
Okay.
And then just move to twelve months.
Okay. Mr. Art Woods, thank you.
For clarity, I think that the real question is, is there a benefit to calendar year versus fiscal year?
Uh, you know, from an accounting perspective, uh, it doesn't make, uh, a big difference. If you've been operating on fiscal year, uh, again, the, the payroll issue, uh, tends to be one of the, uh, big pros, uh, so that there's that true matching of, uh, the reported, uh, wages for the year. Uh, that being the most substantial, uh, expense for a municipality, that's a lot of the, uh, driving force. And then just sometimes, uh, workflow issues in terms of budgeting and, and things, it, it will change the cycle there. But, uh, you know, it, as I said, it, there is a mix of, uh, calendar and fiscal year ones at the municipal level.
So, but making the change would only add cost without any benefit?
Uh, from an audit perspective, if you're speaking for the one short period, sure, that would be, uh, an issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peter Jacob.
We, some of us attended a conference, and they actually did a seminar on this, and they actually said a lot of municipalities are changing to, to the January.
Yeah.
And they said they highly recommend it. Do you know why they're highly recommending it, or is it just certain auditing firms are and certain ones aren't really?
Uh, no, oh, I've not heard many auditing firms, uh, specifically recommend that. Uh, again, there are just some reconciliation issues, uh, when you get into even the reporting, uh, from banks on interest and things, uh, that would keep it cleaner. But there's not, um, there's really not a lot, from our perspective, that I would say I would recommend, uh, the change.
Mr. Jacob Phillips.
Just, uh, any idea why some of these towns are recommending it, some of the bigger municipalities?
There's, uh, there's been, uh, a lot of talk on, on the payroll side, uh, has, has been the main issue. Uh, sometimes as, uh, financial systems, accounting systems, uh, are converted, uh, there often is a, a change made at that point, too. Uh, and again, payroll is often a big driving force because you end up with, uh, significant overlap there, uh, with the cutoff.
Any other questions? Okay. I, I thank you for the report, it was very, uh, I got halfway through it, I didn't read the whole report.
Thank you.
But thank you. Anything for you, Brad?
Let's say, every year, we'd like to pass a resolution at the council level, um, so we'd like to, if possible, get a motion to, uh, approve a resolution next week at the council level.
No problem. Need a, a motion here, or, or no? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Our, uh, next item is number five, reporting and regulation of property casualty insurance bid results. Who is handling that one? Oh, wait, I got this card. Brad, you wanted to take that, item number five, and the casualty, uh, insurance?
Sure. Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with us, uh, this evening for this topic, we have Mr. Peter LaMonaco from, uh, Mesro Financial. Um, as you may recall, this time, about a year ago, maybe thirteen months ago, uh, the council made the decision to leave Irma, uh, the pool that we were in for a number of years to provide property casualty and workers' compensation coverage. Uh, at that time, we got some indicative pricing, uh, from another firm that showed we could, uh, possibly save a fair amount of money, uh, by leaving Irma. Uh, then, and we'll call it spring, early summer, um, the city, uh, spoke with Mesro about, uh, shopping the market for us. And at that time, uh, Mesro went to work, um, getting us quotes and, uh, going over to make sure we didn't lose any, uh, coverage levels. Uh, in fact, a couple of levels, I think, are actually improved from where we were with Irma. Um, and the results are pretty well synthesized in the memo, um, just real high-level. Um, the current year, the calendar year we're operating in now, uh, the city's premium to Irma was about four-hundred-and-forty-thousand. Uh, after the indicative price quotes about this time last year we got, we felt comfortable in putting four-hundred-thousand in the budget. And after, uh, receiving the proposal back from Mesro, uh, the savings looked to be somewhere, give or take sixty-five-thousand dollars. Um, in the memo, there is one note, um, that there's an option to double the crime coverage for a little less than two-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And adding, uh, doubling that coverage for less than twenty-five-hundred dollars seemed to make a lot of sense, both, uh, to staff as well as to the representatives from Mesro. Uh, so what, um, we're looking for tonight, um, after we, we worked through this, is, uh, for the council, the committee, rather, to, uh, have a resolu, make a motion to, uh, enter in, resolution to enter into an agreement with Mesro, which will then flow down to these three carriers, um, for coverage beginning January first, two thousand and fourteen. Um, that's kind of high-level synthesis. If there's any questions, uh, myself or, uh, Mr. LaMonaco can, uh, certainly answer those for you.
Any questions?
Uh, Brad, is there a cause or a reason that we wanna increase the crime other portion? Have we had a lot of?
I'm Peter LaMonaco. I'm, uh, I'm Vice President of, with Mesro Financial. Uh, I work strictly on public entities. Um, uh, your, your crime policy that we're proposing, uh, of your crime covers would be with Hanover Insurance Company, which is an A-rated, uh, carrier by A.M. Best. It also includes your public official bonds. And to answer your question, I can just say one word, Dixon?
Okay.
All right?
I'll accept that answer.
Okay, we got that answered. Mr. Uh, is that all? Mr. Woods, uh, Mr. Jacob?
Just, just one quick question. I think you answered the question, but is there any coverages that are gonna be lower than they were in the past, or everything's at least where it was, or higher? Is that correct?
Um, yes. The, the short answer. Um, uh, Irma's a very fine organization, um, and it's a very strong, uh, public entity pool. The program, the biggest difference in the program that we've offered is that, um, uh, we have Brit Insurance Company, Brit Specialty Insurance Company, again, um, A-plus rated by A.M. Best, would be providing most of your property, uh, most of your liability coverages and your professional coverages. And, um, Hanover Insurance would be providing your, um, property coverage. Uh, they have a very superior, um, coverage form, and then they also, Hanover would also be providing a crime form. All of those coverages, one of the biggest differences is that, uh, Irma has the right, if you're no longer, you're, you're no longer, um, affected by other members in the pool. You, your rates would be, you, your, your, your experience or your history would stand on itself. Uh, instead of being part of a group where if the whole, if, the, if the group had a bad year, everyone in the group, if, even if you had a good year, would be affected by it.
So, are you, are you done? Okay. One follow-up.
So, our insurance is not in a multi-group that we?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, you, you, they cannot come back, um, with the property and liability insurance, um, uh, they cannot come back regardless of how many claims you have and ask you for any more premium. Uh, none of it is audited. Uh, the only thing that is audited is, uh, workers' compensation. And workers' compensation for municipalities is a very small marketplace. Uh, due to the fact that most municipalities have, uh, at least police and fire, and some public works. I know you don't have fire, but you do have police and public work. So, not many insurance companies, um, in Illinois, or even in the United States, are excited about writing workers' compensation for a municipality or a public entity.
And Mr. Wilson, what, what will be, what is a cost savings by switching this company? I, I wanna make sure the people.
Sure. Um, working under the premise that, uh, we take the option, um, that staff recommended, would be, uh, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, somewhere in, uh, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, we'll be saving six, about sixty-two thousand dollars by making this change on this insurance?
Correct.
All right. Any other question? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Um, we're saving sixty-two thousand today. These companies did some bidding with this. What is not saying that they're not gonna raise their prices next year, or the year after? And then a year after that, but then go on.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, do you wanna answer, or?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief response, and I'll, I'll turn it over. You know, I, I asked that same question, um, when I met with, uh, the representative from Mesro, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, some people call it teaser rates, I call it happy rates. Um, and, and this where Mr. LaMonaco can, uh, come in. Um, they said that, um, historically, especially with Brit, that they've seen the renewals be, be pretty consistent, um, as well as, you know, the, the book of business they have with them, that there's a little leverage in there with them as well. But, uh, I'll let him speak a little bit to the renewals that he's seen this year with the same company that we're with, uh, give you a little more comfort level on that.
Um, and I'll make it brief. Um, Brit Insurance, um, we write several municipalities with that particular insurance company, and a lot of them come up this time of the year. A lot of public entities come up this time of the year, in December and January. And, um, I personally have had like four or five, uh, renewals with, with Brit Specialty Insurance, um, that they wrote new last year, and, uh, their average, uh, increase is zero to two percent. And, uh, on the property side, uh, we write a lot of, uh, property and crime insurance with Hanover, and, uh, so far, that's been pretty flat. The only thing that would affect your rates for next year, of course, would be, uh, an industry catastrophic event that none of us can predict of. But that's why you have us, um, is because we do watch the marketplace. Um, we write, uh, we service and write more municipal, municipalities in the state of Illinois than any other financial or insurance, uh, firm, so we have a pretty good handle on the marketplace. Um, we place millions of dollars, uh, with different carriers in the marketplace, so that's basically why you're hiring us, you know, to watch out for your best interest in that regard.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, yeah, now I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay. Can I call Mr. Jacob before the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Jacob, you have a question?
Just, just a quick question. Um, and looking at our, all of our terms and coverages, are they standard for the, this type of size municipality?
Um, very much so. Um, you know, I, um, handle some of your neighbors, and they have the same, very similar, um, very similar limits. Uh, one thing that you have that, uh, I see a lot of municipalities, uh, have higher deductibles, it's not gonna really save you that much on your premium, but, uh, a lot of municipalities have much higher deductibles on their professional, on the, on their employment practices and law enforcement and that. And we were able to negotiate, because of your good lost history, we were able to negotiate a, a rather lower, uh, deductible. Uh, but yes, you're, you're pretty standard. It's whatever your comfort level is, you know? Um, hope that you never have a ten-million-dollar claim, you know? Um, but I have some municipalities that, I, I don't think I have any that have less, but, um, I just came, I handle Lake County, and I just came from Lake County, and, uh, they have considerably more, uh, limits of insurance than a, a city like Wooddale would have. So...
Yes, um, as far as flooding, what, what kind of, um, do we have any special writers for our flooding problems?
You talking about residents or our city?
The city.
Residents or the?
The city.
The city, um...
Talking about when the streets flood, or, you know, there's major damage?
For the, for the city, uh, for the cities and, uh, buildings, you, you have flood insurance.
Hmm.
Um, a, a five-million-dollar limit. Uh, for the residents, it would be, uh, if, if it was the city's fault, you do have, your general liability would provide coverage for that. Uh, but they should, they'll tell you to go back to, the homeowner to go back to their home insurance company first, you know, and then if it truly is the city's fault that something was damaged by a backup of sewer, or other, other, um, pipes bursting or something like that, you do have coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay. Um, years ago, there was only one company out there, was Irma, that wrote cities insurance. Right. Um, now we have other companies out there, and I think we're gonna look, I think they're gonna work better with us. I think, uh, sometimes companies get too comfortable with, with their clients, and the service isn't there anymore. And on that statement, I'm gonna make a motion to, to hire Mesro Insurance to handle our insurance coverage.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
You got a question?
Question? Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, just on the motion, um...
You need a resolution?
We do, yeah. We, for, um, to Mesro Financial for professional services, uh, to retain, uh, insurance coverage.
All right, I amend my...
With the option.
I amend my motion for what you said.
With the option on fine.
Okay.
So... I concur with that.
You, you have that, Ian? She has? Okay. No. All in favor? Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Go ahead, Brad. Maybe you have something, or no? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate, we look forward to working with you and building a long-term relationship.
Thank you.
You had much more fun agenda after me.
Yeah, looks that way. All right. Item number six. This will be professional service agreement, uh, number one, H.R. Green Corporation Engineer Service for Project Manager, Elgin O'Hare Project. Obviously, our contract expired with H.R. Green, so we need to renew the contract for Elgin O'Hare, um, for the engineer firm that's handling that. Am I right? Okay, the dollar amount? Help me out here, Brad. What's the dollar?
Sure, the, the new not to exceed on the contract is two-hundred-and-two-thousand, um, which is an increase from the, the base agreement, so effectively, it's taking the base agreement and adding a new amount on to it to get up to the two-hundred-and-two-thousand. So, it's not a completely new two-hundred-and-two-thousand. It already takes into account what, what we spent, uh...
It's this extension of the contract.
Extending the contract and then bumping it to...
We only hire them in the first half of this, and now we're doing, doing the whole thing now.
Okay, this is the next phase of it.
So, not to exceed, my motion will be approve the contract, uh, change or contract award for two-hundred-and-two-thousand, not to exceed two-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. Am I correct?
Motion.
Motion.
And questions? Mr. Woods?
What is the term of the contract? When does it expire?
I believe the term was April two, April...
Mr. Murmice?
Alman Wesley, was on the right track. End of April, two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Thank you.
April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
And just for those that are keeping track, we've only spent about sixty thousand dollars of the current contract of the one-hundred-and-twenty-four high-end limit. And the major reason for the increase is when we first started this process, project was just kind of starting out. And as we all know, this process has kind of gone to, to warp speed with the tollway groundbreaking a couple of weeks back. So, that's why we're, where we're at now.
Alman Roy Wesley.
I guess questions to the city manager. Do you have a prediction of how far this is going to go? The question basically is, okay, we're extending their contract to twenty-fourteen. How long do you expect to see this project to go on?
Mr. Murmice?
Actually, I'm gonna let Mr. Marquardt answer that. He would probably have a better answer than I.
The, work backward from the completion of the project. The construction is expected to be completed by the end of twenty-eighteen. The design work itself will be going into twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Two of the contracts are scheduled to be bid and be under construction this year. So, you do have a couple more years of design review, project coordination, and then rolling into the construction phase.
Follow-up?
So, nothing against you at all. So, we're probably looking at another one or two contracts, extend it from here on this, possibly, to twenty-sixteen?
Very likely, because that's the term during which design plans are going to continue to be extent, be submitted and will require review.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, I will throw my two cents in this one. The reason is, the reason is H.R. Green is involved in this is all the other towns are pretty much using them and we want to go in as a united front on, on, on project. We, we have, we, our meetings has been, and Alman's been seeing the meetings, is that we are seeing ideas that ATAS is coming up with and then they bring them back to us to help us along. If we have two, the way we looked at it is we have two contractors involved in this, two design people. I, I just think this may fall apart in Wooddale or whatever. So, knowing that we have one contractor doing the whole Elgin O'Hare pretty much, I think it's a benefit for the city to continue with this contract. Mr. Jacob?
Just one quick question. On here, the contracts, it talks about the bridges. It says Salt Creek Bridge at End Middle, a hundred percent design, February two thousand fourteen. Lively Boulevard Bridge, a hundred percent design, twenty, February twenty-fourteen. And then Wooddale Road Bridge, it just says February two thousand fourteen, sixty percent. Is there any reason why that's not a hundred percent like the rest or...
Yes. The, the tollway has provided a schedule of when different projects and different plans are going to be implemented. And what we've included in here is what's projected to be submitted during the six-month period of this contract. Couple of projects, the first two that you mentioned will make it all the way through the hundred percent design, but the third project you mentioned will only have the first submittal of the sixty percent. What's not included in these, this six-month period are contracts for a couple other additional design projects, which will not start until sometime after April of twenty-fourteen. So, the projections are what will be looked at during this six-month time period.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, please.
Just so everybody at home understands, when you say design, you're not the one designing the plans, you're just reviewing the plans.
Correct, Mr. Marquardt?
That's correct. We're reviewing the plans on behalf of the city of Wooddale. We are not the designers.
Okay. I'll do a roll call on this, please. Did I have a second on the motion?
Yes, Peter.
Okay.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Rory Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes. Okay. I'm curious.
Thank you very much.
Our next one is item number seven, the presentation for a TIF district. And I believe she handed out the PowerPoint that she's going to present in front of you.
Yeah, there's a list here.
So, did everyone get that?
It's here.
Everyone get it? All right. The other, the other thing that I would, I would suggest that, let's let her go through the whole presentation and then just jot, notes down what you need to ask, because some of the slides may answer the questions down the line that may occur. So, I would ask that the, that states to then and then we'll ask all the questions we have. Mr. Wilson, you want to introduce the company and her name?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, with us this evening, we have Ms. Maureen Berry from Ellers. And so you may recognize Mr. Kevin McKenna from Spear Financial here to, to do this TIF primer. You know, the goal of tonight is to get a lot of information about TIFs out there. There's, you know, these rumors and sometimes misconceptions about the process and what it means for everybody involved. So, the, the point of tonight is to try and address those questions, alleviate fears to the extent that we can and get everybody on, on a level playing field, moving forward, or not moving forward, whichever way this wants to go, but just to get everybody all at the same time, the same information to, to make an informed decision moving forward on the project. Yeah, and, but you know, we don't need to make a decision tonight on this. You know, with the construction schedule that Mr. Marquardt was just talking to, you know, we will need to, to come up with a decision soon, but soon isn't forty-five minutes from now. So, we have a little bit of time, so. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Maureen and let her go.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. I just also want to state upfront, I was asked to come and provide information tonight. I haven't actually done any analysis on the TIF site. I'm going to talk a little bit about factors that qualify a TIF to, to be a tax increment finance district. That research, that analysis has not been done yet. So, just want to make that clear from the, from the start. I'll spend a, a little bit of time here at the front in the first few slides, just to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page in terms of the, the concept of, of what TIF is and how it works. I know you've got the handouts and you can see there are a lot of slides here. I'll try to move quickly through the ones on the back end. But the idea is just to, to give you a ten-thousand-foot view here of what TIF is and how it works. Essentially, TIF was started as a tool back in the seventies. All, almost all of the states in the country have some form of tax increment finance and it basically was put in place to help our areas that are already developed in our communities. But as they grow older, they need to be redeveloped and a lot of times there is not funding within public entities or even private entities to be able to, to do that redevelopment. So, TIF is, is essentially a financing tool. There's words sometimes tossed around that people don't like and equate to TIF, but it is essentially a financing tool and it allows cities to establish a stream of revenue to pay for some of, of some expensive costs of redevelopment that they would not have money to be able to do otherwise. We don't have as many, you used to hear a lot about CDBG grants that cities received. There was a lot of funding from the state and the federal government that went to cities to be able to pay for a lot of these big public infrastructure projects. A lot of that is gone now. So, we have, TIF is one of the few tools we have as, as cities in place to be able to pay for some of these items. So, the idea again is to try to jumpstart economically sluggish areas. We want to try to level the playing field between a redeveloped area and an easier-to-develop area which is, which is vacant, a green grass site. So, this is why we're seeing, all the development is happening on the outskirts of our towns. Although the Walmarts, the big box retailers, it's easy to develop land that hasn't been developed. It's difficult and it's costly to redevelop land that is already developed. Okay? So, that's kind of the overview of, of why, why it was started in the first place. What is a tax increment? And first of all, the first misconception about TIF is everybody says, okay, my taxes will increase if we have a TIF. And that's not the case, okay? Your taxes are the same regardless of whether there's a TIF in place or not. Essentially, what you're doing when you put a TIF in place is you're taking an area that is in need of redevelopment and you're freezing the EAV, the equalized assessed value of the property. I'm going to show you a graphic in a minute. And as you redevelop the property and the EAVs increase in that area, you're taking the difference between what the EAVs were at the beginning of the TIF and what they are as you go through the life of the TIF. That money goes into a TIF fund and that's what you're using to pay for redevelopment. Hang with me here, just a second. This graphic hopefully will, will illustrate this a little more clearly. If you look at the box on the yellow, this is your base EAV. So, the red line on the left shows you at the time the TIF is adopted. So, if say, say the village or city adopted the TIF in twenty-fourteen, the bait, whatever the EAVs are within the boundaries of the tax increment finance district. So, it's, it's area-based, it has to be, you basically come up with a list of parcels that you're going to say are in this TIF. You start the TIF and then as you go through the life of TIF, usually it's twenty-three years, you'll hopefully, in the case of successful TIFs, we have had some that have decreased in value because of the recession in the last few years. But ideally, as your TIF, the EAV increases, which is represented by the green triangle box, as the value goes up, the difference between the base EAV and the increment and that, that line as it slopes up is what's going into your TIF fund, okay? So, everything that's in the ba, the, the yellow box is the amounts that are still going to all of the taxing bodies. So, the city included, the school districts, the parks, park district, the library district, I think you have a separate fi, fire district here, are still receiving that base EAV level throughout the life of the TIF, okay? That's the hardest part to understand about TIF. So, we'll, we'll go on from there and if we have questions, we can come back to that later. Another just example of showing you what a property tax bill looks like. So, you can see in two thousand eleven, before the TIF, the land EAV was fifty-two thousand some. There was no building on there, or at least we're saying we're going to demolish the TIF, so it's zero, just for simplification purposes for this example. You can see there in two thousand thirteen, after the TIF is adopted and after we've started to collect increment, the building is put up there, redeveloped for, in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. So, you can see how that affects the total EAV. The tax rate stays the same. And so, that, where it says the tax bill, that's, that's a little misleading, but the money, the tax bill is actually, is, is still the same in terms of what the, the taxpayer, well, the taxpayer for that property, their tax bill, I'm sorry, is going up because they've got that new pro, that new development on there. But the twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars difference between the EAV, or excuse me, the, the E, the land, the total EAV on the two thousand eleven tax bill and the total EAV in the two thousand thirteen tax bill, that's the part that's going into the TIF, okay? So, how does TIF work? Essentially, the community creates the TIF and that freezes the EAV. Then the community begins to undertake public improvements such as perhaps making incentives to private development. Those improvements are made, the EAV increase, and then there's a number of different ways you can finance these projects. Kevin will talk a little bit about that. You can do pay-as-you-go, you can do bond financing, there's a number of different ways to do it. After the TIF has expired though, the EAV has increased and the value is higher so that all of the taxing bodies then are able to benefit from the higher EAV values. The but-for concept is really critical in TIF. And this is where I think we have issues with some of the TIFs that you've heard, or horror stories, for lack of a better term, about out there. If there was no but-for to begin with, you may get yourself into trouble. But the but-for concept is required. It's not really, you don't find that word in the TIF statute, but essentially, you would need to justify the project and the TIF in general such that without having the TIF in place, the type of, of redevelopment you'd like to do is not possible. So, if you can't say that, if you can't make that case, you shouldn't be doing the TIF. Okay? So, that's part of what going through the process would be to establish a case for whether the TIF qualifies and but-for the TIF, there would be development in this area. There are a number of required reports for the TIF and so there's a feasibility report, which may or may not be required depending on whether you have housing units in your TIF. An eligibility report basically establishes the justification for how the area meets the qualifications. There's a redevelopment plan and program report, which basically lays out what you're going to be doing with the TIF and how the dollars will be used. We'll give, I'll give you a little more detail on all of these in a minute. And then if there are a number of, you have to have more than seventy-five occupied residential units. If, if that's the case, then you would have to do a housing impact study also. You'd have to basically set out a plan for addressing with any housing units that either would be impacted by the study or possibly displaced even. Okay, so, real quickly again, feasibility has to do with the housing impact statement. So, this is a little, we'll, we'll skip through some of this stuff. The eligibility report allows you to qualify TIFs in a number of different categories. There's, you could do a blighted TIF, a conservation TIF, a combination of those two, an industrial conservation, or there's a newer category for the star line TIF, which would not apply in, here in Wooddale. So, there are thirteen criteria in order to qualify as a blighted category, which I know no one really, really thinks they want to qualify as a blighted community, but unfortunately, that's the term that's used. And it is a, a unique term. It's unique to, the way it's used is unique to the TIF statute in terms of, of what is considered to be blighted area. So, you need to have at least five of these factors applied to the area in order to be used to, to call it a blighted area and to be able to establish a TIF district. And so, those are, those are the factors. I won't go through each of those. If there, the land is vacant versus the other, the previous slide referred to improved land, if you have vacant land, there are a number of factors which make, allow the land to be qualified as well. And then there's choice A, there's also choice B. So, there's issues like having unused quarries or abandoned rail tracks, chronic flooding, so those may apply to any vacant land. Wooddale doesn't have a lot of vacant land though, so that probably isn't something we would be using here. There's also a conservation district qualification. And basically, the difference between that and the blighted category are that you only need to apply three criteria instead of five, but there's an additional criterion that you have to have at least fifty percent of the structures in the area have to be more than thirty-five years old. Industrial conservation is the other category we'd look at here, but they, they're, these different criteria, all of them have to apply, not just a, a couple of them or a few of them. So, the second one is labor statistics. You'd have to have employment data within the village above six percent or at least equal to the national rate during the last six months. I'm not sure whether that would apply here. Area would have to be industrial. You'd also have to be contiguous to a blighted area, which you don't have any TIFs established right now, so that would be a hard one to meet. So, that probably isn't, isn't going to be applied in, in Wooddale either. So that probably isn't going to be applied in Wooddale either. The data inputs that go into writing the eligibility report, we do a rating survey. Typically, okay, a city will hire a consultant, a TIF consultant, to do these reports. And we'll go out and we'll do a site survey, actually look at each parcel individually. We're looking for evidence of the criteria that we just went through to make sure that each parcel, or at least a good, I won't say a majority even, but you're looking for, to be able to make a case that the area suffers from these criteria. Tax information, we're looking at EAV data from the last five years. We're looking for other village information such as if there've been a number of building code violations in the area, or, you know, the village has information about flooding that may have taken place, those kinds of things, maybe significant crime data that affect the area. Different kinds of records from the federal level, the state level, the county, township assessors, we work a lot with them. Consultant studies that may have been done on the area that have identified issues there that you're dealing with, or perhaps plans for the future. And again, the state and federal information. The redevelopment plan and project covers a number of different topics. It talks about the city's goals for the TIF, what they hope to accomplish if the TIF is put into place. It lists objectives. It talks about a specific program that the city will follow in order, in terms of using any TIF funds that are accrued during the TIF's lifespan. It puts some policies in place, number of these, there's different levels of each, but they get a little redundant, but this is how the act specifies this all has to be dealt with, so. And then there's a budget put in place, which is a little different than you think of when you look at your city budget, which is pretty much what you're expecting to spend. Whereas in the TIF budget, it's actually more of a ceiling or a maximum. You can spend more than you put in that budget. But if you go over the budget, then you have to amend the TIF, which you probably want to try to avoid doing. But it can be difficult to estimate over the 23-year lifespan of a TIF, how much money you're actually going to spend, especially when you start and you don't really know what kinds of projects you're going to be undertaking. So we always recommend that we try to set the budget much higher than we actually think we'll get to. You're controlled actually by your TIF increment, though. You're not going to be able to spend more than you, more than you're able to generate in revenue, so that's really your controlling factor. There's also a number of certifications that have to be made in terms of the redevelopment plan and projects, so those are different areas we would need to address in the plan. Other considerations that have to be taken into account when you're looking to qualify a TIF, the area has to be at least one and a half acres. The increment must be projected over the period of the TIF, so we would do kind of a basic increment projection to help establish that. If there's any vacant property within the TIF that may need to be subdivided, it has to be done prior to the adoption of the TIF. Any unincorporated property has to be annexed. There also has to be a map of the area and a legal description of the area that goes into the final plan. Housing impact statement, again, that's just, this is just a little more fine point detail on what is included in the housing impact statement. This is an area that is commonly, I think, there's a lot of misunderstanding about how TIF affects the other taxing bodies, and schools in particular. The schools are generally the biggest share of your tax bill. So it's important to understand how TIF does actually impact the taxing bodies. We always recommend to our clients that they have some discussions with the other taxing bodies, especially the schools, before you even consider going forward with doing a TIF. You want to try to make sure they understand what the purpose of the TIF is, what your goals are, how you would be going forward with it. And I think the idea is not necessarily to strike any agreements about what you will do for them going forward, but to try to establish a tone that says, we recognize there's going to be some shared sacrifice here in going forward, and we're going to kind of go through this process and take a look-see approach to going through the first few years, try to generate some increment. And definitely, if we get to the point where there starts to be surplus in this TIF, meaning the TIF is successful and you're generating a lot of increment, to the point where you see the taxing bodies suffering, there's an opportunity to share some of that surplus back. So that's, those opportunities are there. I think the point is just that you want to basically try to make it understood that you're willing to work with them on this as you go through, assuming you are willing to do that. There's a number of ways that schools can be reimbursed as well. Schools are supposed to be reimbursed for at least partially, for any students that are added to the school district as a result of activities within the TIF, and the same goes for libraries. If there are schools within the TIF, you can use some of those TIF funds to assist with redevelopment costs within the schools. So for instance, if they needed to have a couple of classrooms added on to the building because of the growth within the TIF, or a new roof even, you could use TIF money to help pay for some of those things. Because of the way the state aid reimbursement is calculated, it's done on the base and not on new EAV, it's possible that the schools will not lose full EAV advantage. So schools generally, the districts, sometimes they have multiple cities or jurisdictions working within them. A lot of the schools that we've worked with, they understand how TIF works, but we'd be hap, we're always happy to kind of sit down with them and run numbers and make sure they're fully on board with how that all works. If they're tax capped, though, they may not lose any funding anyway. So, you know, again, it's based on whether, you know, the way that it's calculated is whether the, I have to read this, increase from one previous year, that's the lesser of the 5% or the CPI. And so if the EAV is increasing at a rapid pace, they may not be able to collect all of the increased amount from the EAV increased value anyway. So to be able to grow this and then at the end of the TIF, it all goes, they all are able to share in that new increased EAV value. So there's a way to basically allow them to capture that all rather than just a portion of it, which they would have gotten had there not been a TIF in place. Again, I talked about beginning the discussion early. Just reading that last one here. And essentially, this is also kind of a common misperception that the municipality could make an agreement with the school district to make them happy, but you, if you're going to do that, you have to include all of the taxing bodies. So you cannot just make an agreement with one of the taxing bodies, okay? Okay, adoption process, this is a lengthy process. The TIF Act provides for a lengthy process because they want to give, the state wanted to give the opportunity for the public to be, have a lot of opportunity for input into the process, so, and at least be informed of what's going on. So anybody that's interested in finding out information about what's happening in the TIF can get on the Interested Parties Registry and information will be sent to them. There's notification required for all property owners and for those within a 750 feet radius of the TIF. There's a joint review board process, which means that all of the taxing bodies have a representative, they come to the JRB, which is going to be held basically after the reports are filed and people have had a chance to read those. But prior to the public hearing, the JRB meets. And the JRB can vote to recommend approval to the village board, or the city council. The city council has the final decision on whether the TIF will be established. If the JRB makes a negative recommendation, then it requires a supermajority of the city council members in order to override that. First of all, though, the JRB is required to basically meet again, the city's required to try to work with the JRB to try to come up with a compromise solution. But if that is not able to happen, and they may vote for it anyway, they may vote against it, but then again, you would need to have a supermajority of the city council to override a negative recommendation by the JRB. The public hearing is then held, which is the opportunity for anyone in the community to come and talk about what their thoughts are. And then the adoption would take place, sometime, it has to happen within 90 days, excuse me, 90 days of the public hearing. And the whole process takes around, the public adoption process usually takes around 100 to 120 days. So there'll be a little bit of time on the front end of that, too, and it will take time to develop the reports and do the analysis. So that's, but for the adoption process, I'd say about that length of time. There are some things that are required once the TIF is up and running. A TIF fund, a separate TIF fund is required to be established by the city, so this TIF funds would not be commingled with other city funds. Annual reports would be required, the city has to do a report every year, and then every 10 years, a more comprehensive report. But the annual report then is filed with the state comptroller's office. And then that report is also shared with another, the joint review board then gets together annually to review the report, and they'll have the opportunity to ask questions there about what's happening in the TIF. The city also is, should be engaged with making and encouraging improvements in the TIF district, so working on public infrastructure improvements, working with developers to make private sector improvements as well. The city wants to make sure that the but-for test, again, is not only applied in the creation of the TIF, but to any requests for TIF funding along the way. So again, that but-for test needs to be applied, and the city needs to make sure that they can say without but-for the TIF or the TIF funding, this project would not be feasible. So a gap analysis or perform analysis can be performed to help determine what that gap would be, and again, that without the TIF funding, you couldn't, the project wouldn't happen. And she'll go through this a little bit more, but there are only certain expenses that are TIF eligible. So the city has a role in ensuring that any project that happens that is going to receive TIF funds, you need to ensure upfront that those costs are going to be TIF eligible. And those include things like the costs of studies and surveys, architecture, engineering fees, those kinds of things, your TIF consultant, your TIF attorney fees, any costs associated with land acquisition and site preparation, so including demolition, any costs for rehabilitating or repairing buildings, any costs of construction of public works, job training, relocation costs for businesses that you may move from into the TIF or out of the TIF, and certain financing costs. And again, each of these requests is going to go through the same process as any other expense that the city would undertake. It has to go through a review by the city council, so there's no different kind of process. It's going to go through the same review and approval process that any of your other village or city expenditures would require. There are things that you cannot spend TIF funds on, and that includes new and private construction and the purchase of equipment. So we always say if it's not nailed down, you can't spend TIF money on it. New municipal public buildings, so you could not build a new city hall with TIF funds. You cannot build a golf course with TIF funds, and you cannot demolish, remove, or substantially modify any historical resource. Okay, I'm going to skip over this one because Kevin's going to talk a little bit more about this one. So in closing, just some of the benefits about TIF, again, it's the most flexible tool that there is, really. Again, it's the best tool that cities have at this point of being able to establish a new stream of revenue to take on some of these very costly public infrastructure improvements. All of the increment that is generated can be applied toward these costs. And development within your TIF can serve as a catalyst for other development outside of the TIF in the community. So those are the benefits. Challenges, it is a bit of a difficult qualification, or excuse me, the adoption process can be difficult. Depending on the area, qualification may be a question, too. Again, it has to meet criteria, so not every area can, you know, be established as a TIF. And oftentimes, there are taxing district objections and public objections that you need to work through. So those are challenges, but they certainly can be overcome if you take the right steps to address those. So I won't talk anymore. Let's, maybe Kevin should go on with his, and then we'll take questions.
Should we, Kevin, yours is for the finance part? Should we, it'll be easier to ask the questions.
I'm going to do the financing.
If you don't create the TIF, you don't need to talk to me.
Well, I understand. But I can't mix up who we had.
It's a good point. All right.
So we'll go to the finance, obviously I'll call from Mr. Art Woods because he ran out ink in his pen there, so Mr. Woods, go ahead.
It'll be a short, a couple, if we could go over, you know, obviously a big concern would be school funding. We've gone through a couple of bad years, so they're already, have their back at the wall. I have at all those board meetings also. Could you quickly go over that a little bit with the 5% CPI?
Right, right.
That sort of peacock dance that they go through to get that, but the benefit of, or their ability to reap a greater reward, you know, after waiting, I think is the part I want a little clarity on.
Okay. There was one part that said the schools do not lose full, I'm not going to spend time trying to find the slide. They don't lose the full, they may not lose, and every case is different, so I'm trying not to make blankets, but in, there are oftentimes when schools may not lose the full EAV advantage because of the way the state aid reimbursement is calculated, this general state aid allows basically, communities with lower EAVs get more general state aid than communities with higher state aid. So even as you're redeveloping the area and the EAVs are increasing, you're still being reimbursed in the general state aid level at a lower EAV level. Does that make sense? So essentially, so there's an opportunity there to continue to be reimbursed at a lower level even though the value of the land in your TIF is actually increasing. So that's one way. Another one is because of the tax cap system that we have in the collar counties in Illinois, tax extensions are limited to the dollar amount that's equal to an increase from the previous year that is lesser of 5% or the CPI. So they're only going to get that much every year. But you may potentially have a situation within your TIF where the EAV is actually increasing at a larger rate, a faster rate than that. They would miss out on that because they're capped at what they can get. So this basically is saying, we're freezing the, with the TIF, you're freezing the EAV at the beginning of the TIF, and then you're going to get whatever it is at the end. So we don't have to worry about what's happening in between there and whether they're keeping up with the rate of growth.
So they won't sustain the incremental losses?
Exactly, exactly. They'll be able to capture the full advantage at the end of the TIF.
Almost as if the building was built that year and you added it to the tax rolls as a new $5 million asset.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to more clearly explain that. I know I kind of...
Yeah, you had it a little bit, and I was just like, you know, for clarity of people watching at home, too. My other question...
Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
On the TIF, once we establish it, you have the 23-year time period. Could we end that?
You can end it early. As long as there's a number, you have to, you can't have any debt outstanding, you can't have any redevelopment agreements that at least would benefit the city by ending them early. If that's the case, you have to basically eat the cost of doing that. But as long as you don't have any debt out there, any legal reasons why you couldn't end it early, the city council can vote to dissolve the TIF at any time.
Okay, then this one is kind of a similar question, but at any... Okay, then this one is kind of similar question, but at any time, can we reduce the size or scope of that TIF? Meaning that if we took a four-acre parcel and we, developers came in and we developed two acres of that parcel, that kind of worked out. We wanted to get that on the rolls to again, benefit the library and the school, but continue with the remaining two acres, is that a possibility?
You could do that. Yes, you can delete parcels. It's a simple ordinance vote by the city council. If you're going to add parcels, that requires an amendment, which requires you go through the whole adoption process again. So that's something to keep in mind. Another way of dealing with that also could be just surplusing some money back to the taxing bodies, you know, rather than taking those parcels. There's a number of ways you could deal with that, though, if you wanted to.
Okay, excellent. And two, just two quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Now, obviously, we're going to go through this when we say we want to move forward and we hire a firm, probably much like yours.
That would be great.
Yeah. And what, what is that, is there, I guess the, the underlying question, is there a quick or short litmus test that we can put our suspected TIF area through as opposed to, do we have to spend a hundred thousand dollars for you to do an exhaustive report to tell us it won't work?
Right, right.
Or is there a quick or short?
Yes, I mean, the answer is, the short answer is yes. Depending on the area, again, sometimes it's pretty easy to just take a look at it and get a, a general feel for it. I did drive by the, the area that's being considered, but I don't exactly know what the boundaries would be. You know, I think there, it, it might require a little bit more analysis, but we can do something where we break the work into phases. And if it's not able to meet the test at the end of the first phase, then we don't need to go on to the others.
Okay, excellent. And the other one, I don't know, maybe this will be, could be for Brad also. What, trying to get an understanding of what the fees or the process would be, do we have a handle on that at all? Do we, do we have numbers or do you not feel appropriate to discuss it at this time? Well, what their fee would be to go through the?
I, yeah, I'm was drifting.
Or is that going to be on the next part? I don't want to jump ahead.
But I work with TIF consultants and everything with other municipalities and through your one question, you know, when you go to the interview stage where you start asking to get firms in, you could have them do a windshield test. And if you, you say three firms should come and get interviewed, but all three firms have driven by and say, you got to be crazy, you're not going to qualify, then you can stop right there. But typically, it's going to be phased and typically, you should expect it's going to run thirty to fifty thousand dollars. I mean, I think that's a reasonable budget to start with and, and you'll talk to firms and they'll give you quotes, but you know, as, as Maureen said, it'll be phased and you'll typically see it's a certain cost per the first cut and then, and then the second cut and their, her report, she said. And it's going to depend on whether there's kids there, whether there's housing units there, that sort of thing on, on one of the reports. But you know, I think that's a reasonable budget to, to think about when you get into this.
All right, thank you. And I really appreciate the information. I think the purpose is that we're trying to speed up this process, you know? So that's why I asked that question as opposed to laying back and.
One thing to just quickly, it's recommended that you use a TIF attorney, somebody who's experienced, not just in how to spend TIF money, but the creation of TIFs. So that's generally something you might want to consider. And you know, the process, you know, generally is pretty much the same until there's lawsuits or something like that, in which case it's good to have an attorney involved at the beginning rather than trying to play catch-up at the end. But also, I wanted to say that there is an opportunity for the city to pass a, a, basically a reimbursement resolution, something that says, a feasibility ordinance that says the city's considering, looking into a TIF and adopting it. So from this point forward, any money that's spent in, in furtherance of this process can be reimbursed by the TIF if it's adopted. If not, the city pays for it out of its general fund, but if, if the, the city does adopt a TIF fund, then you could pay for those costs from the TIF fund at a later, you could reimburse yourself for those costs.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my question.
Mayor, you have a?
Yes.
Question?
Regarding the criteria, I, I think a few years back, I don't know, Brad, maybe Mr. Forrest might have been involved. I remember somebody telling me something like, out of the thirteen criterias, I think we had about seven or eight that we met already and we would qualify along the Thorndale corridor, from what I remember. But the reason we didn't follow through was, why start the clock if we're not ready to do anything yet?
Sure.
And that's, I think that's why we backed off, if I recall correctly. Is that my understanding right? And John is shaking.
I think that's why we backed off.
Right.
Okay. So I'm just going to the windshield test we were just talking about, so some of that's already done, I think.
Mr. Jacob?
Just a couple of quick questions. The first one, I mean, once the city council says, yes, we want to do this and hires a firm, approximately how long from the day they sign a, you know, contract with a company like yours to the end? How long does it normally take?
Well, again, the adoption process is the longest part and that's ruled by their state statute prescribed lengths of time that must occur between each notice and each point in the process. And that, that part takes about a hundred to a hundred and twenty days. It's hard to get, hard to shave too much time off that. The other part is just basically the time that the consultant would spend doing the survey, doing the research and writing the reports, which typically takes, you know, one to two months.
Mr. Jacob?
And so what's the, I mean, six months?
Well, so a hundred and, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days is, is three, four months plus one to two months.
And then second question, with the other, since we have so many taxing bodies, of course, we'd want to work with all the taxing bodies, but could one of the taxing bodies put a stop to it or?
Well, they, they, there are only certain members, there are only certain taxing bodies that are represented on the joint review board. So not every taxing body has a seat on the joint review board. It's basically your major players, your school district, if you have two school districts, each of them will have, have a seat, the park district, the fire district, the library district, and these are if you have separate districts versus a department within the city, the county and the township. I think I got them all. But your road and fire district, your mosquito abatement, none of those are, are on the JRB. So basically, and the city as well has a seat. So there's a, like I said, there's a vote taken and if they don't, if they vote not to approve it or forward a recommendation, then you need to try to work things out. If you can't work things out and they give a negative recommendation, again, it goes back to the city council for a vote, which would need to be at least a three to, three-fifths majority, super majority vote in order to override that.
Mr. Jacob?
One last question. Once the, everybody votes on it, at that point, everybody votes on it, is that when it starts, the days?
No, that doesn't, no, it's, okay, so the city council, well, the city council votes on it. That's officially the, the beginning, depending on which county you're in and what the county deadlines in terms of when tax, the increment actually begins being collected. But the, the TIF date starts as the date that it is adopted by the city council, which can, which can be at least no sooner than two weeks after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Call me Roy Wesley.
You did mention townships are involved?
Township is a, is a seat on the joint review board, yes.
How about forest preserves?
No.
Okay, I find that kind of interesting because you mentioned county township.
They're part of the county.
No, not in DuPage.
Well, okay.
All right.
They don't, they don't have a seat.
I find that interesting because DuPage County is the only county that is separated throughout the state. Where Cook County, there are forest preserve boards on with the county board, so. And we, you mentioned about TIF attorneys. What's their, do you have any idea what their fees are?
I have an idea, but it, it depends on how much work they do for you. I mean, if it's just, it can be as simple as they're reviewing the reports, they may attend a public hearing and, and then it can be fairly limited. If we get into a situation where there are disputes at the JRB level, there are lawsuits, whatever, at some point, that's where it would get more costly. It doesn't have to be a really expensive proposition, but I think in general, it's a, it's a good policy to have somebody who has that, that type of expertise in place. If you're a city attorney, actually, I know you're a city attorney, we've already talked about that a little bit and they have people on staff that have expertise, so.
We have a good attorney. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I have maybe two questions. You said on that joint board, we have three school districts. Does it, does that mean they get three seats?
Yes.
And my other?
Three?
We have three. We have Addison.
They have to be in the district, I'm sorry. Yeah, they, they have to have property within the TIF district.
Oh, okay, that, that ends, okay, I, because we have three school districts.
Yep, I got you.
So actually, we only got one school district.
Yeah, usually it's just elementary or high school.
Right.
Okay.
We have one school district and I know, all right. And then you said the park district or no?
The park district, if it's a separate, separate taxing jurisdiction.
Okay, why in the library?
This is established by the state statute.
In the library, right.
You don't have any control over this. The state, yes, the library district, if it's a, a separate taxing body.
If our fire, if we have a fire district, that's a separate taxing body, are they seated?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just didn't. Okay. I think, I think the TIF district that we possibly be me looking at is I, I just want the people to know that it ain't a big residential area that we try and tip because I don't want residents to start calling, oh, you're tipping my neighborhood. I think it should be perfectly clear where we're looking to tip is up by, I think, if the council agree, is up by Wooddale and Thorndale for Eljone O'Hare. So I don't want any residents to think that tomorrow, we're going to tip your area. I want to make it perfectly clear that we don't get phone calls, that we mainly talking about right now is the council up here is Wooddale Road and Thorndale, the Eljone O'Hare. So I just want that, make it perfectly clear that I don't receive fifty phone calls tomorrow morning we're tipping the whole town. Okay, anything else?
I suggest all the residents call you anyway.
Mr. Jacob?
Just one final question, as for, all the taxing bodies involved, do they all have an equal vote on that board or is it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we'll take the financing part now.
Okay.
If you'd like to stick around, there might be more questions.
Sure. His is pretty short, so.
Yeah, we'll keep this short. Basically, you know, there's two kinds of projects. There's the projects you want to do. And maybe that's just fixing up the street or sidewalks or whatever and, and this permits you to do them just as you would have regularly done them, just like we did street bonds, but you could get reimbursed out of TIF funds if it's in that area. The more interesting ones, of course, are the projects that bring in a developer, help a developer, as Maureen said, like the gap financing. And there, it's really all about risk. And other ways of financing are all about whose money's going to get used. You know, a good developer wants to use your money and they would rather not have any risk at using your money. And that's the problem, they'd rather shift the risk to you. So all of the different kinds of ways of doing financing and such are all about whose money gets used and who gets to pick up the risk in the project. So this, okay. So you can do bonds, just like we did alternate revenue bonds last year, you could do alternate revenue bonds or you could do revenue bonds, pure TIF revenue bonds, except no one's going to buy them. So it makes it hard to finance because it's risk. If you do alternate revenue bonds, which are general obligation alternate revenue bonds, you are filing, you know, you sell the bonds, if the development goes, you're fine. If development doesn't go, you've got to come up with cash, you know? The auditor says you got a lot of cash, that's great. So, but you might have to draw on your cash until the project gets going. And, and, and this is all about risk. So pure revenue bonds are simply saying, somebody's going to lend you money in the belief that the project is going to go. And that's about impossible today because short of you talking about having a twenty-year lease with a big box like Walmart, almost no one's going to lend you money on a pure revenue bond. Because at the start, it's somebody's dream, you're hoping and it'd be great to have happen, but it's, it's just a very difficult situation. So, but, so that's again, it's cheapest to do alternate revenue bonds, but you're accepting some risk in doing it. But if you really want the project to occur, maybe that's the thing. And, and you know, as Maureen said, it's gap financing, somebody comes in, says they got a hundred million dollar project, but they're three million dollars short of making it. It's a tough call and we have clients who are looking at that. Pay as you go, you just, you just tell the developer, look, we like you, we think it's great, come on in, develop, and we will reimburse some of your costs. We'll reimburse various costs as, as Maureen listed, eligible costs. One of the financing costs is the cost of their mortgage interest. So you can do, you can reimburse them and that way, they keep the risk. You're not accepting their risk, you're only reimbursing them if they perform and if their project performs and if there's cash flow coming from it. But they get to keep all the risk, so hopefully, they make some money out of it. But you're not at risk. And then finally, a developer note, this is like a revenue bond sold to the developer. Developer says, you know, I really need, I really need to get some money and you say, that's nice, but we're not going to go out and borrow money. Instead, we will give you a note, if you perform, you're going to get paid off and maybe, you know, it's a three million dollar gap, you give him three million dollars and he's going to say, well, gee, I got, you know, it's going to be hard to take to the bank. And you say, that's too bad, but, and you put out an interest rate of perhaps eight or nine percent. And so he's got a piece of paper that says, I owe you three million dollars at, at nine percent from the city and it's fine, but he's still at risk unless he can figure out somebody to sell that. And, and most banks, I don't even think will take it as a significant pledge. They, they may depending upon how much other assets he has pledged, but it's really, again, it protects you from the risk of the project. And if the project works out, five, ten years later, you may cut a deal with the guy to replace his developer note with some kind of a bond because you've got a successful project. All of those things come in, but, but that's really about the financing. It's all about who gets stuck with the bill in case it doesn't perform and who's got the risk and who's got the cheapest form of money. And that's financing, one on one.
Okay. Any questions on the financing or anything? Because I don't think we can make a decision tonight.
It's all case by case.
Right. I appreciate you coming out, giving us the info within.
It's a hard topic to cover in thirty minutes or less, but.
You did fine.
Okay.
Any, any other questions before they leave? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I didn't consider future meetings. The six-month budget update, December, finance year change, can we look at that? My other question is, I don't know if this falls under this committee, maybe Jeff could help me out or the mayor. I'd like to look at doing a employment.
Review.
Review, knowing that Eljone O'Hare is coming, like to see all the departments in the city and see how many down the line we might have to hire once Eljone O'Hare and try to stay ahead of the ballgame there. So, I mean, I don't know where that falls under. Does that fall under finance, Mayor?
I would say more. I would say so. Probably at the budget time.
Right, that's fine. I'd just like to see if we could, or CIP, I, you know, like to look at that because Eljone O'Hare is going to come a lot quicker than we bargained for, I think, so. Christine Weir?
Thank you. I'd like to add a review and discussion of offering our water bill discount program to veterans that qualify under the income threshold offered to our senior citizens without the age limit.
Okay. Mayor, please.
Just want to make a comment and I'll be repeating this next week as well. Wooddale will be collecting recycled use of liquid cooking oil. Wooddale will be collecting recycled use of liquid cooking oil after Thanksgiving. That's going through the county, this is, a lot of municipalities are involved. And on Saturday, November 30th, after Thanksgiving, between 9:00 and 12:00 here at City Hall, bring your used liquid cooking oil in a closed container such as a milk jug, plastic bottle, or container. They're just trying to keep this from people dumping it down the sewers and creating issues for greener initiative.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I don't know if it would come under this or not. The Front Street, has been a while since we heard about that.
That would be under building zoning.
Planning, zoning?
Planning, zoning.
Okay. Okay.
Is that it? Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, just a quick note, the fiscal year change will be on that December meeting as well.
Okay. So those items, any other items? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll call Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to order, let the minute taker show that the same people are present. Approval of minutes for the meeting, October 24th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report and recommendation, Arbor Woods, letter of credit. Before we get into a long-winded dissertation, maybe I'll make a motion to approve the termination of the existing letter of credit. Do I have a second?
Second.
And then we can go into, if there's any questions. Alderman Roy Wesley.
First, I want to get some clarification here. The last meeting here, it was mentioned that the city was going to maintain the pond, or is our pond. Didn't you like to address that, or the petitioner would like to address that?
Mr. Forrest.
We can address that. The subdividers agreement and the declaration of covenants that established the Homeowners' Association have been rereviewed and rereviewed, and they state that the Homeowners' Association is to keep possession of the detention pond for maintenance.
Alderman Wesley, Roy Wesley.
So, how, is this, this association is formed already, is not formed? What happens, I don't want nothing to happen to the builder.
Mr. Forrest.
The paperwork has been prepared and signed off and recorded, it was recorded in 2008, that establishes the Homeowners' Association, the way it's set up is until a majority of the townhome units are sold and closed upon, the developer basically remains the Homeowners' Association, as he has a controlling interest in that. Once a majority of those units are sold, I believe it's 75% was the figure, at that point, that's turned over to the Homeowners' Association.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
How do we prevent from something like, what's the one, Mr. Ranty's subdivision?
Villicar?
Villicar, from happening? That we would have, you know, you remember, we had a whole big argument of saying, who's going to maintain it, the association, and then he-
Yeah, they didn't went into foreclosure, and the bank ended up finishing up the subdivision.
I think the difference there was, they didn't form the Homeowners' Association, and what you're saying is the Homeowners' Association is formed, an illegal entity, and all that stuff's-
Correct.
So there's a board?
Correct, well-
But there is no board yet, because there's not enough units.
Thank you. Yes.
Alderman Peter Jacob.
Just one question on that. I know you said the maintenance is going to be the Homeowner Association, who actually owns, is it still going to be?
The Homeowners' Association owns the physical property of Outlet F, which is the detention pond.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Did we justify the pond that, oh, that's right, okay. No, we covered that. I just, I think that's, I just have one question. If I could get a, before the council meeting to, for the final approval, if I could get a copy of that letter of credit and the Homeowners' Association articles, just to take a peek at it. With that, I'll, one more question. Alderman Peter Jacob.
John, I know one of my concerns was the lights, I see that's been fixed, and thank you. As far as the sodding of the grass, will that be done too? Is that, was that part of, or is the city going to have to do that?
No, anytime there's a construction project that's undertaken by the developer, if they do any sort of work that's, needs to be restored, that's part of their responsibility, is to do that. Yeah, those two lights that were out, it was all they needed, was the bulbs changed.
Okay. Okay, with no further questions, let's take a roll call vote.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings? I have a couple. Could we look at, I know we talked about this, at least I talked about with the city manager, the building department and permitting software. I know that that's somewhere in the works, but have we moved forward? Have we looked in, researched different vendors and different things? Jeff, or John, either one of you?
We can get you that information.
Okay. Another thing that's been, that we've talked about up here a couple times is recapture agreements. Could we have a little refresher on those? Do we have any ordinances in place to kind of govern some of these things, or are they just, whatever, somebody puts together? I guess my question is, do we have the ability to create something to have a little greater control over them? Or are we at the mercy of the people that write them and approving them?
That's a discussion I would like to have when the city attorney is here, so that we can really get a clear definition on what authority we have. But yeah, recapture agreements is something that staff's been working on-
Right.
-for a little more thorough presentation for council's consideration.
And then the third or last thing for myself is, do we have, or can we get a progress report on the Front Street project? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Your new employee's been in how long? John?
You're talking about our housing and zoning inspector?
Yes.
About two months.
Okay. Could, is it possible I could get a progress report, and are we making progress on these inspections and stuff? Because we had the houses inspected before that were paying their fees but weren't getting inspected, so that's why we hired. I want to see how, if this is really going along here and going to get the mod done on a yearly basis.
So you want to see the old inspection, what the new ones are compared to what the old ones were, that we're getting more traction?
Sure.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn?
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Call Public Health and Safety Judicial Committee to order, let the minute, let the roll call show that the same people are here. Motion approved of minutes, October 10th, 2013. I'll make the informal motion. How about a second, someone?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Greg. Chief.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I couldn't get a second, so now we'll go to you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Chief.
Coming to you tonight, I actually was hoping to do this as part of the budget process for next fiscal year. Our MDTs in our squad cars, in the last month and a half, we've experienced a very high failure rate of those. They are four and a half years old, and they're used 24 hours a day, you know, every day of the year, most of those hours of the day, in different weather conditions, different heat, different humidity. They are ruggedized computers, and they've done very well for us, but as I mentioned the last month and a half, we've spent about, close to $4,000 in repair. I actually got a repair quote yesterday for another one that went down, for a hard drive and a touchscreen of about $1,500. We're holding off on that based on the action tonight. But these computers, just important to know, it's kind of a, it's a crucial part of the job, and we receive all of our calls for service on there, we write all of our citations on those computers, all of our reports are written on there, they do control all of our in-car video cameras, they provide GPS location to our dispatch, so they can see where we're at when we're dispatching our calls. So the, what we're requesting is the approval to purchase 13 in-car computers, that would include the CSO trucks too. They recently switched over to electronic citations. And I guess one important thing to note about that is the Circuit Clerk pays for a large part of that. The report writing, a lot of that is paid for by the 911 Board. But in doing that, the funds we would be looking to use are out of the DUI Tech Fund, and right now there's close to $100,000 in that fund. That is specifically paid for by people that are convicted of DUI arrests, they have to pay a special fee that's ordered by the judge, the amount is set by the judge, to specifically fund the further enforcement of DUI violations. So there is $97,000, as of last count, in that, in that fund. We're looking to spend an amount not to exceed $55,950, and we do replenish it at a rate of about $20,000 a year.
Okay, Chief?
Yes.
You said 20,000, okay, 20,000 a year, so is 97,000 over four years, almost?
Five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, last questions. Alderman Woods?
Chief, I was, and I sadly forget it on my desk at home, but did a little research, so I looked at the number and the equipment that you were purchasing, that model number, CP, obviously that encompasses 50 different configurations. So doing the math, kind of backed into one of the configurations it might be, specifically looking at the chip that was in there and the speed. So I guess the underlying question is, could we purchase a better, more current piece of equipment to get more life out of it? Are we buying one that's already, in terms of technology, maybe a year or two old?
Actually, if I could have the IT manager, he reviewed the quote on this.
I knew I'd get him out one of these days.
To answer your question, these are the newest model out. The only other option would be put an I7 processor in, which is not recommended, as the I7 tends to run hotter than the I5, and the performance difference is nominal, so it's really, wouldn't be the way you want to go. And these are the absolute newest model out there. Oh yeah, and there is upgraded RAM in them as well.
So this is the I3 with the upgraded RAM?
This is I5.
It's an I5?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That answers my questions then. Does that mean five times the speed? I5? Alderman Wesley?
I have my questions. I did talk to you about this. My question to you, where's the other bids for this process? It's over $10,000.
I do have the, there is a state bid out there and we're, Nick was actually able to receive a quote from CDW that beat the state, the state bid through CDS Office Technologies by several thousand dollars. So they were able to beat that. And I know he's looked for another quote. The one company was met with, we're not going to be able to beat the state price, but we're certainly working on one more price for you to be able to see three prices by next week.
I'm sorry. What was the state price? It's not here in the memo.
The price would be about $3,000 more.
So 15,000?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, I was going to try to speed this up, but I was going to make a, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new computers for the police cars and the not to exceed amount of $55,950. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. No, I think. Do you still have your question, Mr. Jacobs? Okay. Any other questions? I'm calling to question. Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay. Items to be considered for future meetings? I would like to put on about the license plate reader. Can we do that in? Well, we won't get it in November. Can we do it in January?
Sure.
It's too cold.
I know. Anything else? Okay. You have a motion for adjournment? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm going to turn over the, excuse me, the Public Works Committee to my co-chairman, Tony Catalano.
I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee, roll call. Minute taker, please take note of the same council members that are present. I need a motion to approve minutes of October 24 of 2013.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation for pay request for Partial Six Schroeder Asphalt Service Inc. for Royal Oak subdivision improvement project and not to exceed an amount of $611,156. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead Alderman.
Roy.
Roy Wesley.
It says not to exceed. Are we, are we only paying them a portion?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, when's the next portion coming?
This is just a partial payment typical for all our construction contracts. There could be one more partial payment before a final payment, but they're wrapping up the project and they're on time. So this is just a partial payment, not a project closeout.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes. Next is report and recommendation for pay request, partial number two, Northwest General Contractors, Inc. for the 2013 infrastructure improvement project and not to exceed an amount of $941,871.33. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Roll call, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And number six is report and recommendation for vehicle purchase with wastewater plant, 2014 Ford F-250 and not to exceed an amount of $18,305. That is my motion.
Second.
Go ahead Alderman Roy Wesley.
I see that this is a state purchase. Do we need, these are just to get water samples. Do we need an F-250 to go get water samples? Or could we use a Ranger truck or could we?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
The F-250 is a like model with what is currently used. It's not just used for water samples. It's also used for other activities around the wastewater treatment plant. So it's not, so, so it's not solely just for the picking up of water samples and moving water samples.
Do, does the state have four-by-fours? F-250s?
Go ahead.
Yes, it does. Currently, the vehicle that is currently utilized, the number 452, is not a four-by-four, does not have a snowplow package or anything. So we're basically replacing it in kind.
So my question is, you're spending $18,000. And why can't we put another four-by-four in there? I mean, yes, it's more money, but I think you get the bigger bang for the buck.
Go ahead.
That, that could be a consideration. I was not here for the development of this. I mean, if you would like to table this conversation, we could go back and look at different options for the future, but as of right now, we're looking at just replacing it in kind without the four-by-four.
I apologize if you think I'm being strong on it and I don't mean to be, but I need to have these questions answered for making a fair judgment. That's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
We have a motion for it? Is there a motion?
No.
Yes.
We do?
Tony and Deion.
Okay. Roll call? Nope. No. No questions, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just had a comment. Roy, I had already emailed Brad and the department to make sure that a four-by-four was not needed and they had said that they were okay with the.
Who? I'm not going to, I didn't, forget it, I'm not going to go there because I was looking for an argument.
Any more questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Okay. Items to consider for future meetings? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Aye. I'll bring this up to the table now. We spent all this money for the GIS system for the trees, streets, water, locations and all that. Back then, we locked that. And I know we changed, leadership has changed, but we also looked at putting computers or something in the trucks where they could locate them during the major snowfall and that. I believe that's why we went to the GIS system that we get equipment out there that a guy calls out their water main or we have a major water main break and we need to find out where that big location shut off is. Our GIS, we spent all this money for GIS. I really like to see that computer system for the vehicles be on a fast track to get in play because we have done it. And I'll say one thing, if that was the case, if this program wasn't going to go in play with the GIS where we could fit the trucks with laptops or whatever we decide, I would have gone no for GIS. But since we adopted the GIS, I don't think we are using that as much as we should. I know the building department is using it a lot. I know the police department is using it a lot. I don't know if our public works or water department, maybe they do it before they go out. I don't know. But the whole problem of that GPS system that we installed, that we paid for, was that truck drivers or the guys go out there, know exactly where that is. There's a street sign missing, okay, we notice that street sign missing, we'll put a new street sign. So I really would like to see that on a fast burner to get that completed, that project.
Mayor.
To add on to that, Alderman Wesley. Jeff, I thought we purchased one or two for Public Works in, Tony?
Go ahead.
I was just going to tell the council not to worry that they did the heavy lifting already and approved this in this fiscal year's budget and it shall be done this fiscal year. We're working on some different ideas as far as a smart tablet or a laptop, Toughbook, whatever platform. We haven't set our, you know, we haven't had nothing in concrete decided on. We've talked about different ideas with the previous director. Nick has some ideas. We haven't rolled out any of the testing yet, but it will be completed this year. We've talked about it initially, but nothing's been, you know, done yet.
Mayor. Mayor.
And Jeff? That's for all the trucks? All?
This fiscal year, the council decided to do a pilot program with a couple of devices, not all the trucks. So it's been budgeted, this is year one of doing this.
Go ahead, Mayor.
But I heard that, okay, a couple were purchased, but only a couple people had access to it because, I'll be honest with you, I always had a big water main break on Wooddale Road. I saw our guys going through the plant and I'm like, don't you guys have the tablet? I thought, I thought we had passed something. And he goes, no, we don't have that yet.
Yeah, the council passed doing it this fiscal year, which is until May 1.
Right. Okay, so that's still happening.
Any other questions? Go ahead Alderman.
I just want to add, Clean the Creek Day.
Go ahead.
There's actually a few items like that kind of on staff's radar. We didn't plug it in on the committee future agenda item yet just because I didn't have a date. I just didn't want to throw them on there. But there's, there's some of those administrative items on there.
Any other items? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, could we get a, an update on what's happening at the treatment plant? How that's all going?
Go ahead.
Yeah, there's going to be a report on that in your packet tomorrow, actually.
Thank you.
I knew you were going to ask that.
Of course.
Any other items? Okay, then I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
No more.
Go ahead.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
That's the name. We had, we had a tree program going on where each ward was supposed to get done every winter. Each ward would get done every four years. Ward one would get done one year, ward two would get done the second, three, four. It really not got, it really didn't get off the ground. I'd like to have a report or his ideas of how we're going to do the tree trimming in the city. So.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I would almost win bet that was taken off the radar because all the ash trees that were infested and I think they went priority on that, so.
What?
I don't think we're going to have that good of a report on that.
The ash trees just started dying off a couple of years ago. I don't know. Ask Peter if he's talked to someone about it.
Any other items? Want to make a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.